Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the meeting now. Welcome to the Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting. And why don't we start off, call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM, and I'll ask you to join me in a pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Just to introduce folks, everybody, all the way over here to our left is... And to my other left...
Jason Hayes, Board of Selectman member.
I'm Kathy Castren Ellis, Select Board Member.
Mark Parento, Select Board Member.
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
And Becky is not with us tonight, so there will be just four of us. First on our agenda is public comment. I'm not aware of any public comment, so we'll move right on to our new category of department comment. And we have with us tonight, Council on Aging Director Alyssa Lee. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I'm so excited for this new addition to the agenda. So, really appreciate your time in welcoming all the departments. I just wanted to share a bit of good and exciting news. I shared with all of you, and hopefully those that are watching have also seen it. But wanted to broadcast as wide as possible that we have a very special upcoming event hosted by the Groveland Council on Aging is the Engagement Celebration and Symposium. This is a free event happening on June 29th at the Pentucket Regional High School. The doors open at 10:15, and the event starts at 10:45. So, we do encourage people to come early. There will be morning refreshments and the opportunity to visit our resource table partners. We have a full day planned, starting with various workshops and demo classes. We have our 3B Fit class, a yoga class. We'll have a demonstration from, or conversation from AgeSpan about family caregiver support programs. We'll also have representatives from Nichols Village and the Wingate residences at Haverhill having a conversation titled "Living Well Together." And we will also have the Alzheimer's Association offering insights on understanding Alzheimer's and dementia. I am also very excited to welcome our keynote speaker, Dr. Catherine Estey, a renowned social psychologist, psychotherapist, and active on aging well. She will be sharing her expertise as well as facilitating a panel of our own 80-somethings from here in Groveland. So, super excited about that conversation. In addition, we wanted to make sure it was inclusive of all of our community partners within the community. So, we have VC Park, the Historical Society, the library, and many others joining us, as well as some outside resources, including AgeSpan and Our Neighbor's Table and so forth. So, should be a really wonderful, wonderful day. I know the parking lot is huge at Pentucket High School, which is great in so many ways, but we acknowledge it's a long walk. So, we do have a golf cart that will give rides to people from their cars to the entranceway if they need it. We will also have our Groveland COA accessible van available for door-to-door transportation for older adults here in Groveland that would like to be part of the event. And I just wanted to make mention that this isn't possible without our partners. We have Nichols Village as a partner and sponsor. We have Bethany Communities and Wingate residences. And also certainly, this is produced in part with a grant awarded by the Massachusetts Association of Councils on Aging by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Affairs. So, this is a free event. Registration is open, and if you register, that will secure your free lunch. So, just so that we can plan accordingly, please do. If you have any questions at all, more than happy to answer. And I am just very excited to share the wealth of resources for our community as well as to foster community partners for those that attend us that day. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions, but really just wanted to share the word. And if any of you are able to join us, we would love to have you.
Do we have questions?
No, I don't have any.
Nope. Well, I'm hoping to be able to come. And I know your last event was really well done. It was really exciting, and it was a lot of people. Will this also be tri-town, the three towns?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we welcome it to every, to all the surrounding communities. Certainly focused on Groveland organizations, but again, open to everybody.
Wonderful. Thank you for giving us this and for putting it out over the airwaves. Do we have this, like, on the regular television, on the sliding, I don't know what you call it, art? He knows what I mean. I make a worldy sound. He knows it means the TV, when they show events that are coming up. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you for stopping by and giving us an update on it.
Thank you for your time.
I'll see you there. Okay, thanks. All right, we'll move it right along here. As I open this up, find out where here is. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have discussion and possible votes. So, we have five items under, no, four items. I am mistakenly counting the one that just happened. We have four items. And just an overview for folks that don't have access to our agenda. The first one, the first item is a speed sign request for Center Street near the Boxford Line. The second is a letter from residents at the Groveland Housing Authority regarding the bus parking at the municipal parking lot. The next item is a discussion of a new executive coordinator position and appointment. And then last is a discussion of the Highway Department reorganization, which we have spoken of previously, but we are waiting for our town administrator to come forward with her thoughts on that. So, going back to our first item, you all received a letter from the police chief regarding this resident's request for a speeding sign on this particular part of Center Street. And the letter is addressed to the town administrator and to our consideration. And he spoke with AJ Paglia, who's, is he the, I don't know AJ's position in Boxford. I know he's on the Police Department.
That's correct. He's on the Police Department, but he's speaking in his capacity as the Chief of Staff for Senator Tar's office.
Okay, okay. I'm trying to get this all straight. And that he's been in contact with the homeowner, and he met with him. Topic has been the speed limit in that area where Center Street is almost to the Boxford Line. Due to the distance between the house and this area on Center Street, the legal speed limit is 40 miles an hour. With Center Street and the narrow roadway, I believe it would be appropriate to take action to address this concern. So, this is from Chief Gillen saying that. One way to address this most easily is to erect an advisory speed sign with 20 miles per hour in black legend on a yellow background. AJ and I agreed this type of sign is best because it will warn motorists traveling west on Center Street at the Groveland-Boxford Line to reduce their operating speed as they approach the narrow roadway and culvert. This sign does not change the speed limit, but warns of a condition requiring a reduced operating speed. This sign is not enforceable, but is a good way to post a suggestive operating speed in a specific area without changing the street's speed limit. I respectfully request that the Select Board take my recommendation as discussed by me and AJ and vote to erect an advisory 20 mile per hour speed limit sign westbound on Center Street before the culvert at the Groveland-Boxford Town Line, signed by Chief Jeff Gillen. Discussion.
Don't we have to have a motion first?
We can do either or. Would you like to make them, I mean, we can discuss and then make a motion. I think it's going to be a little informal.
I think it's a good idea, but I don't think it's going to solve the problem with this resident. Actually, he's not even a resident of Groveland. But if that's what the chief wants, I guess we'll have to take his recommendation, go with it. But it's not going to solve the problem with this guy. We've had problems with him for 20 years now, so if he thinks that's the best, we'll try it. But he'll still be complaining.
Understand your concern. Ed?
Yeah, to me, this is one of the most ridiculous things that's come before the board here in the nine years, the plus years that I've been on the board. There's no, I defy anybody to be able to go around those, that S curve at more than 20, 25 miles an hour. It's narrow by the bridge. There's no speeding problem there. We've dealt with this individual, doesn't even live in the town of Groveland. We've dealt with this with these rocks that they got down there along Center Street because they didn't want people parked on the side of the road. That's a danger. Somebody's going to get hurt there with that. Then further was, there was a boat ramp or a boat launch area at the S curve that they ended up putting some barriers in, some posts, so that you can't get a boat in there. Now, Johnson's Pond is what they consider a great pond. It's over 10 acres. It's supposed to be used for fishing, following, and boating. And they can't access a boat on that ramp. And I brought it up before. If there's a problem at Johnson's Pond where they need some kind of a rescue, there's no place to launch a rescue boat. And other than a carry-on, carry-in boat. This individual that made this complaint complains about everything. We appease him, and then he just comes back with something else. I think it's time that we put a stop to it. We're putting up a speed limit sign that means absolutely nothing. There's down there today, I happened to drive through there. I was on the way to North Andover this afternoon, this morning, late morning. And there's a 25-mile speed limit sign from Groveland headed to that S curve. I don't think that anybody could go 25 miles an hour around that corner anywhere. I think this is a waste of time. It's a waste of money to put the signs up, to have the Highway Department have the signs made up and put them up. It's not going to stop there. It's going to come up with something else to complain about. Complained about the dirty diapers and stuff that people are dumping down there. The trash. Complaining about, complained about individuals that were fishing in the pond. And the environmental police went down. They were parked in this man's driveway so that they could observe the people fishing. He called the Groveland Police because there's somebody parked in his driveway. Now, that's absolutely ridiculous. So, I'm a big no on this. It's time to, it's time to put a stop to it. It doesn't do any good. I can't support this proposal.
Okay. And Jason, do you have any discussion?
No.
Okay. I read the letter. I'm also aware of the history behind the resident, who's not a resident. But I also respect Senator Tar's office and Chief Gillen's time. And if they've put their heads together and they think that this is a step in what they consider the right direction, I'm going to support it. Marking the words that, you know, we're doing this, and we're not going a step beyond that because it doesn't make any sense. And that's that. Okay, so, you know, these situations come up, and it ties up professional time of our police chief. It ties up professional time of our senator's office. And I think if we just say, okay, try this, at least we're taking a step in the direction they're recommending, and that's the best we can do. So, I'll make a motion to approve the request from Chief Gillen to put in the sign, I don't know if I'm going to read it correctly, advisory 20 mile per hour speed limit westbound on Center Street on the appropriate background as he described in his letter.
I'll second that.
More discussion?
Yes, further discussion. If you remember...
Is it on just the sign, though? I'm...
If you remember the history down here...
Is it on just the sign, though?
Contacted the State Representative Lenny Mira's office before, and now Senator Tar's office.
I understand.
I think it's foolish to put up a sign that is not enforceable. Maybe a sign similar to an S curve, a slow S curve, but not, not a speed limit sign that can't be enforced.
Well, the motion's been made and seconded. Thank you for your contribution. Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Three in favor, one opposed, one absent. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a letter from the residents of the Groveland Housing Authority concerning the bus parking at the municipal complex. Is there someone here from, okay. And so, you'll be speaking on behalf of the residents?
Yes, so nobody else showed up.
Okay, well, welcome to our meeting. So, just so you understand, we have the letter. I'm just going to read that, and then you can go to the mic and introduce yourself, say your name and your address, and we'll go from there. So, hold on for one minute while I read the letter. So, we have a letter from the residents of the Groveland Housing Authority, which is right behind us here. And it's to our town administrator, Rebecca Alderman, to Clara Ruiz Vargas, who is the executive director for the Housing Authority? Okay. And the letter states that the residents of River Pines, living on the south side of the Building 1, are constantly being disturbed by the coming and going of the school buses parked in the town municipal parking lot, particularly when they run them to warm up in the morning. This activity is not done within the hours of the town noise ordinance and is waking people up. Past attempts to rectify the problem have not succeeded. We request that the buses be parked and warmed up somewhere else to not disturb residents. Thank you. And then there are several, one, two, three, six, six or more signatures here. Just by way of past attempts, I'm not aware of this coming before our board before in the last few years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And just to clarify, does the town have a noise ordinance that is being violated?
We do not in regards to a noise ordinance. We only have an ordinance concerning noise and hours of construction.
I see. Okay, thank you. All right, it's your turn. Introduce yourself, please.
I don't know much to say. I mean, things are every morning...
If you could, please, could you just give us your full name and your address, please?
I'm John Bonin. I live in 10 River Pines, apartment 111. And along myself with the neighbors. I mean, it's a constant thing. I mean, a lot of us are old, and we don't have regular time schedules that we abide by. And some people go on a bed at that time in the morning. The wintertime, the buses are out there idling. And after a snowstorm or something, it's just, you can just smell the exhaust coming right across the field because the wind's not doing anything. It's just settling right in there. And you can actually feel the building vibrate because you have these big, huge exhaust pipes, and they're all facing towards the building. And last year, I tried to have some, you know, turn them around, move them over here, or do something with them. Nothing happened. So, this year, same thing. Called the police about it. They wouldn't do anything.
Did you go to your, did you go to Ms. Vargas?
No, I haven't heard from her. I don't think she wants anything to do after hours.
Okay. So, is this her, the first letter that you've sent to her, the one that you sent to our town?
Yes.
We did get a response from the executive director.
Oh, we got one? Okay.
I mean...
Do we have that?
It just comes down to right and wrong. I don't think it's right that a privately-owned company should be bothering the residents like they are. I mean, when Vern Carton had his buses here, he didn't have them parked all over town. You know, I mean, it's just wrong. Is the town getting revenue from the buses? No, they're not even registered here.
Well, I'm not saying this is why they're parked here. So, don't miss read this, but that was something I had checked on a couple of years ago with our town administrator. And actually, if the buses are garaged overnight in the town as they are, they do pay their excise tax to the towns that they are.
Well, that's good to know. At least getting something.
Right, but I believe the parking at the municipal lot was, is granted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Best my understanding, right? But we don't charge anything for that, do we?
We don't, we, the former years when we didn't have a fee schedule, we did not charge for parking at the, in the parking lot, correct?
Okay. And do we charge now?
We do have a fee structure.
Oh, we do? Okay. Live and learn. So...
Another thing...
I guess I can, I can understand your concern, and I can see it in the writing. And this is something that we're just going to have to learn a little bit more about to figure out some ideas. But I'll let fellow board members, if you'd like to ask any questions at this time. Do you want to start with Ed? Go ahead.
What time do they start up?
6:32 every morning.
6:32?
Yep.
Well, you got that down, right?
I've been waking up. They wake me up at least three times a week, no matter how I try to sleep.
Oh, yeah, the first pickup is probably at 6:40, 6:45.
It should subside for the summer because they, Friday's their last day.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful in the summer. They're not, they're not there. But there's always next year, you know? And it's just a constant battle. I mean, three weeks ago, when we were voting over here, the police were actually over there kicking voters out of the parking spots because the buses were due to come back.
Well, because we permitted them to park there. That would be why, yes.
There should be signs up, or there should be something. And, you know, would you want them in front of your house every morning?
No, we would not. No one would. So, it can be your concern. We're just trying to gather information.
Center Street?
Yeah.
I mean, it didn't work out on the corner of School Street and Gardner Street. Got booted out of there. They used to be there, but of course, they're loud, and they bother people. So, I think Center Street or even the Bagnos School or something. Someplace would be better where it won't bother people.
Mark, do you have any questions?
Well, I was going to wonder if, I don't know what they really call it, but if we put like that canvas stuff up on the fence, if that would help deflect some of the noise.
That would. Yeah, that if they parked them facing the police station, that would do a big difference. But they're, I don't think they're very good parkers. They don't want to pull in that way.
Unfortunately, I think that's kind, this is the most centralized area for them, and that's why we chose here. And plus, the police can keep an eye on them. But, I mean, we got to think of some simple, some simple resolution for this.
What are the alternatives? Right.
I mean, you know, I don't know what they call that, but they put that thick, like, canvas on the chain link fence. It kind of might deflect some of the noise back if that would help. I don't know.
The DPW over there has a few buses parked there now. I don't know why they can't put a few more in there. It's all fenced in. It's got cameras. It's secure, lights, and there's no neighbors.
Yet. Everything's yet, but I...
And no matter where you park them, there's going to be a neighbor someplace complaining.
Yeah. I mean...
You know? Unless you get them someplace that's like on Center Street out there. Or like the school. We still got the Bagnos. Big parking lot there, not getting used all night.
Jason, do you have any...
I mean, there should be something we should be able to figure out.
We're, yeah, that's what we're doing. We're discussing tonight, and we'll probably take it under consideration and then look into some things.
Okay.
Okay. Jason, do you have some questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, would it be a big deal to move them over here?
I thought it was, too. All these are the things we would do, like...
I don't care where they go, as long as they don't wake me up in the morning.
Wake somebody else up. Wake somebody else up in the morning.
You know, if they're my buses, I would care, but they're not my buses.
Correct. Understood. Okay. Well, if we don't have any more questions, yes, Ed?
I like your idea of the Bagnos School. Now, that's under camera, isn't it, Rebecca? The parking lot of the Bagnos School?
Yes.
I think that makes sense. That's probably why it won't happen, because it makes sense.
Yeah, well, it might happen another 10 years.
No, no, no. Although, give us a little time to take this under advisement, if that's all right with you. And we'll let our town administrator talk to some folks and figure out what kind of other choices we might have.
Yeah, there's got to be something else.
There usually is.
All right. Thanks for hearing me out.
Well, thanks for coming in. It was nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And next up, we have the executive coordinator appointment. That would be presented by our town administrator.
Thank you. So, I have received about seven applications for the position, all very impressive candidates. And I am going through the process of interviews as we speak. And I would like to request that the board allow me to make the appointment for the executive administrative position.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the town administrator to make the appointment for the executive, oh, gosh, I forgot the...
Executive coordinator.
Executive coordinator appointment. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Four in favor, one opposed, one absent. Okay. So, now, let's move on. And next on the agenda is the Highway Department reorganization. Again, our town administrator.
Thank you. So, as we discussed at the prior meeting, we had our highway superintendent resign from his position. We did go through an exit interview process. And as part of that process, the former highway superintendent expressed some concerns in regards to the administrative support of the position, as well as the salary compensation for the position. So, taking that feedback, we had done a little bit of research and talked to some of the other departments and just took a look a little bit more in terms of the operation of the department, and especially even just trying to figure out what an interim solution was with the current working form and taking over some of the responsibilities as that particular position has done so when the superintendent was on vacation or was sick. So, we decided to take a deeper dive into making an assessment as to whether or not we should change the current structure that we have. If you all remember, we originally had a roadway commissioner. That was an elected position back in 2018, or I want to say 2017, 16-ish. The town went through the process of making that a highway superintendent position instead of the elected roadway commissioner, which was a big step for the community. The former highway superintendent was the first superintendent that we had hired coming from, away from that particular position. So, it was still new to the town in trying to figure out exactly how things operated. So, what you'll see in the memo that I presented to you is a current structure chart where you'll see how you have the Select Board, you have the Highway Superintendent, and then myself. And then you have the three divisions underneath that we had established. So, you have the roadway crew, if you'll call it that, from, to the foreman and the senior laborers. Then you have the Public Grounds and Cemetery Division, and then you have the Public Facilities Division. And so, in taking a little closer look at how we could potentially fill those gaps that we had found, we are proposing that it would be a dual role, or not a dual role, but we would make a project manager role instead of the highway superintendent, where the project manager's focus would really be a lot of the administrative type of items that that particular office takes care of. And you'll see in the memo is that my office deals a lot with the grant writing. So, we deal with, you know, getting the monies for the municipal vulnerability preparedness grants, the complete street grants. We help with the Chapter 90 funding. We help with the pavement management plan. We help with the tree maintenance plan. So, we help with a lot of the planning and the financial grants that help allow us to move forward with these particular projects. And so, it's not really feasible for my office to continue to carry on that role when it really should be housed within the Highway Department. And there should be somebody that's dedicated to doing such, because as we all know, the Chapter 90 funding that we receive is really minimal. So, the only way to maximize the monies that we do have is to go out for that additional grant funding and to advocate for these projects on the state and federal level. And we've seen recently that there's a lot of monies available through those programs in order to make our projects go further. So, if we are trying to, you know, pave a roadway, we can also take into consideration drainage. We can also work with water and sewer in terms of their infrastructure in the roadway, electric, et cetera. And so, have somebody try and take a more comprehensive, broader look at these projects comprehensively, we can actually make up an entire project for less of the cost instead of ripping up somebody else's work, or just finding ways that we can make something accomplished because one grant can pay for this, and one department's doing this. So, it really allows us to kind of take a more strategic approach to the department. So, the actual proposal is to have a project manager in place, and that project manager would focus on that. They would also focus on the Chapter 90 submittal request. So, a lot of the submittal requests and a lot of the other information that we have to provide the state is through an online portal. So, getting familiar with ARC GIS and getting familiar with the other portals that we need to submit the information on and tracking that information accordingly. As you'll see later in the meeting, we also have our Fair Share Apportionment Act monies that come in that is supposed to help supplement the Chapter 90 funding, which is from the millionaire's tax that we recently received. So, again, taking into consideration that money and figuring out exactly how we can utilize those funds to the best of our abilities in getting some of the projects and the high priority projects off of our list. So, the proposal would be to have the project manager exist and then also provide some of the funds that we have for the highway superintendent for... of the funds that we have for the Highway Superintendent for the executive coordinator position to actually do the administrative work. So, that would be a lot of the very basic stuff, which would be the payroll, submitting their time sheets, making sure, as you know, one of the branches has the CBA under the collective bargaining agreement. So, we have, you know, certain allowances and incentives that we offer those individuals. So, clothing allowances, cell phones, longevity. So, we would have somebody who could track that information. We would also have that person do the bills. So, that person would submit the bills through VEDAR, which is an accounts payable system, which would go into the accountant's office. That position would also help field call so that we could then have that information filtered through to the correct departments, whether or not it be something more project-oriented, which would be the project manager's, under the project manager's realm, or whether it's something that maybe the working foreman would need to address. So, we propose to have a portion of that go towards the executive coordinator with the creation of a project manager and then we would take and make, we would make sure that anything from a disciplinary and grievance action would filter up through my office. So, as a working foreman, the foreman is not allowed to discipline and/or have any types of employee oversight in that regard under the CBA. So, that would be filtered up through my office, which is not something that we typically see. We have a lot of great employees over there. So, in speaking with the working foreman, the union representative, speaking with the town planners office, speaking with the accountant's office, speaking with a lot of the different components of how that office operates, the proposal is to again have that project manager position with the executive coordinator position, have the foreman focus on the oversight and the construction oversight that happens in the field and still have the public grounds and cemetery supervisor and buildings and facility supervisor, which could also be supported by the project manager in the realm of capital planning for the buildings, making sure that when we're going out for bid for buildings, we can do proper procurement. So, they would help with the horizontal and vertical construction of IFB process or RFP process, writing the specifications, et cetera. So, that would be something that they could help with those other divisions within that department as well.
That's a lot. Yes. So, so right now, in our current setup, it shows the Board of Selectmen sort of in charge administratively on a day-to-day basis and we're not here on a day-to-day basis. And this would separate us from the day-to-day operations, which makes sense for where we're headed. I read through a lot of it. I thought it was very well written and well thought out. I think that I wasn't on the board when we hired our first non-elected Highway Superintendent, but from what I understood of some of the back and forth and discussion, they have difficulty trying to hire hands-on Highway Superintendent, Foreman type of person plus a project manager where our salary wasn't probably as high as a Department of Public Works manager would command in a bigger town or city. And I think that's kinda where we ran, they ran into the wall and had to decide what to hire. So, I appreciate that you did the exit interview because I think that's really helpful to the process. I mean, this looks well laid out. Under our building facilities, we just have the one individual, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then under public grounds, we have the one full-time and then the three...
Seasonal help.
Then the three part-times that we just hired last week, right?
Correct.
Then we have one foreman and is it two or three laborers?
We have three senior laborers and we have a junior laborer position, but we have not filled that in full-time.
So, we have three plus maybe one more to go. Okay. So, we're starting to actually build a department that could work.
That's the goal. And I think that the working foreman has done a fantastic job and he's out in the field. And so, if he's not, you know, telling the crew what to do, he's in the trenches with them, doing the work with them and trying to make sure that the project gets done. So, to have somebody else then come and say, are you doing the work? It's kind of a lot of overlap in terms of what you're paying somebody to do when you're paying them more money to just check in that they're doing the work. So, it just makes a lot more sense to make sure that there's, you know, the tasks are evenly distributed without the department so that there's not that overlap.
And so, when they're like, take it from the starting point of when they're putting together their budget. Who would be putting together the budget, trying to decide what they wanna do the next year and what they need? Who would be that, who would do that?
So, they, the project manager and the individuals with each division would work with myself to put that together. Because I think that there's a lot of things that needs to be taken into consideration. As we said, if you're talking about the roadway machinery budget and the equipment budget, then there's a more heavily focused on what the foreman has before him or what he has lined up for some of the more immediate pressing needs if there's a drainage issue or if there's a roadway that needs to be repaired due to repair that they had made more recently. And the same with, you know, the public grounds and cemetery in the building is that they would come forward with what it is that they're looking for. And then sitting down with the project manager, we would be able to then focus again how we can make those dollars stretch further and what we're planning for in the future. And then we would set the budget from there.
Okay. And so, then when they decide like what roadwork they're gonna be able to afford to do or how much they'll need to do it, who would decide? Are we still working through the Marimac Valley Planning Plan kinda? But is it, who's looking that plan over and saying, well, we can do that one or we can't do that one?
So, that would be presented to the select board. So, we're gonna be working with the project manager to update and have a pavement management plan, a plan that will be presented to the select board as we had discussed at the last meeting when we brought the Highway Superintendent before you as to what the plan is moving forward so that that can be the plan and the vision of the select board moving forward. And then the monies will fall into place into making that happen. There will be times where that plan will need to be flexible if there's a water main break, if there's something, something might move more to the top of the list because the road's already open and it's gonna be repaired anyway. But again, it would be a plan that would be brought before the select board to make a vote of approval and that is the plan that we would carry out moving forward. But that plan would be something that the project manager would work on to present to the select board for their approval.
Okay. So, they would agree overall at the beginning when they submit the budget between the foreman, the project manager, yourself, and us. This is what we're gonna try and do for the year on the Highway Department. So, I mean, because what we saw is, and I imagine it was because the budget was so stretched thin, but crosswalks weren't painted, things weren't fixed in some areas, got fixed in others. And so, we're trying, we'd be trying to kinda streamline this all better.
It would be a way to streamline it and offer a lot more transparency into the actual projects that people see, more so than a lot of the projects that people don't necessarily see. So, you see when a crosswalk is painted, you see when a road is paved. So, this will provide a little bit more detail into how things are being carried out and how decisions are being made and why the decisions are being made in a public forum so that you're being very clear and being held accountable to the decisions that are being made.
Great. Okay. All points to the board. Jason?
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this here, I see a plan that's very complete, effective, efficient, and it works within the budget that we already have set, which I think is outstanding. And I think one of the places that the superintendent may have fallen short for a town of this size is you might have five, six, seven foremen under a superintendent because that's their job is to manage the foreman. And we didn't, we don't, we have one. So, that position may be, may have been a little bit more of a overkill for that. And so, moving to a project manager that can manage the projects and especially since we do have a lot of projects and that can manage the plan for paving and then the foreman can take care of everything that needs to be done, I think is a, is a great way to get this all accomplished within the funds that we have available.
Mark?
Yeah, looking at your flow chart here, the current structure and the proposed new structure, under the proposed, the board is completely out of the loop. It's not listed on there.
Yes, and that was an error in terms of the chart and the way that I tried to put it on the page. So, you got cut off. So, that's my mistake. You're the first on the chart. So, you would always be, because as you know, you're my appointing authority. So, I report directly to the select board. So, it's the select board, then the town administrator. So, that block is missing. So, that's my error. My apologies.
Which answers the, like on the next steps, the last sentence, the board will need to delegate employee disciplinary authority for highway employees to the town administrator except for termination. So, my thing was that if the Board of Selectmen is not listed on there, then they can't act in termination if they're not on the flow chart.
Correct. And I have no termination under, there's no bylaw, there's no approval. So, that is correct. So, it would default to the select board no matter what.
We got paged cut. We got paged.
I know. I do sincerely apologize.
That's okay. Can I have a motion on this proposal?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and take the recommendation of the town administrator for the Highway Department reorganization.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Question?
Sure.
Do we need to amend it to put the board on top seeing how it's not on our paperwork?
You can make a contingent upon that.
What, I'm sorry?
You can make a vote contingent upon that.
I'm making the amendment to make a contingent on the Board of Selectmen being the first on the flow chart.
Top of the pile. Okay.
Okay, we vote on the amendment?
We can vote on it with, he accepted the friendly amendment.
Okay, you change?
So, we're gonna vote on it as amended, yes. Okay, so, we'll vote on this as amended with the select board added to the top of the newly proposed chart. All in favor? Whoops. Is that yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I knocked over the, I knocked over the mic.
So, four in favor, one absent. Do you need us to approve the job posting or is that, is that all kind of part and parcel?
I included it so that you could see exactly what we would be looking for, but I don't believe that you would need to take a separate vote on it.
Great. Okay. So, we're moving on to appointments and resignations and sadly, we need to accept the resignation of Steve Sargent as a full-time police officer effective June 13th, 2024. And I'll just read, wrote, this is written to Chief Gillan. He's writing this letter to service notice of this resignation from the Groveland Police Department effective on the date I mentioned. He has had a fulfilling experience working with the Groveland Police Department and for the town of Groveland in a whole, but have accepted a position with FEMA on the regional Region Four Incident Management Assistance Team as an Operations Section Branch Director. Sounds like a good job opportunity. And he would like to take this chance to thank you and the town of Groveland for the opportunity you've given me as well as the support you have provided to me during my time working for the police department. Wish the department much success in the future and we can feel free to reach out to him in the future so we can call him. That's a good thing. Can I have a motion to accept Steve Sargent's resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Siege Sergeant as a full-time police officer effective June 13th, 2024.
Second that.
Okay. And as I said before, we accept with regret and wish him well. All in favor? It's unanimous?
Steve's been around a while and he's done a great job. He's served in a couple of different capacities. We wish him well.
Yes, he did. He was our emergency management.
And I think at one time he was a dog officer, wasn't he?
Yeah.
He might have been everything at once. We maybe had him do all the...
I think he had over 20 years, I believe, right?
Yep, he did. Served us well and served us a long time. We'll miss him. Okay. So, that was unanimous. Four in favor, one absent. Next is the appointment of Adam Hayward of Abbott Street, Groveland as a finance board member effective June 10th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. So, he's filling in the term. Yep. And Adam's here. Come to the mic and say hi.
I'm here for any questions you may have. Looking forward to the opportunity to put my skills to work for the town.
I like that when you say something, you mean it. You said at candidate's night.
I told you I do it. Here I am.
Said if I don't succeed in this, I'm going to take an open seat on a board. And I thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Yeah, we thank you for stepping up and hopefully more people will do that in some of these vacant positions. Thank you very much.
Any more? No? So, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We point Adam Hayward to finance board.
I'll second that.
You're dying over here. The pollins, pollins winning, you're losing. Okay, all in favor? Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Four in favor and one absent. Okay. Next, we have a, what I call a pile of minutes. What else to call it? We have, they go all the way back to February 12th and they come forward to May 13th. So, whichever order you wish to move them in, I've read them all. They're fine for me. Has everybody had a chance to look through them? I believe everybody who's sitting here today would have been present at these four meetings, I think. Yes? I think so. It's February 12th, February 26th, March 11th, and March, and May 13th. There's a pile of minutes.
Hours, hours.
Okay. Well, can I have a motion? Let's go from the latest. Can I have a motion for the minutes of February 12th, 2024?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for February 12th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Any changes or discussion? Nope. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Okay, I need a motion for the minutes of February 26th, 2024.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for February 26th, 2024.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any changes? Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay, so, three in favor, one abstention.
Or the 12th?
No, the 26th.
Yes, yes, I wasn't there.
Okay. So, let's call for again. All in favor? Thank you. Three in favor, one abstention, and one absent. Call for a motion for the minutes of March 11th, 2024.
I move for passage. They look to be in order. Oh, no, I'm sorry. March 11th, I wasn't there.
I was gonna say, you were here the 26th.
I was there on the 26th. I think it was remotely on the 26th.
Dan wasn't here.
That's all right. It passed.
That's all right. We had a, we have a majority approval, so it's fine. But he would have to abstain on the 11th then?
Yeah, I wasn't there on the 11th.
Okay. So, a motion for the March 11th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
No. All in favor is three, abstention. One, right? Do I have that right now?
Yeah.
Okay, you're laughing at me. Okay, three in favor, one abstention, and one absent. I need a motion for May 13th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May 13th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Everybody was here. Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous, four in favor, one absent. All right, all of an unfinished business. Trash and recycling updates. We haven't met yet, but we will be meeting soon. I think our town administrator has the most updates as far as, you already announced the one grant that you were, we received, right? That was at our last meeting, did they know about that?
Which grant?
Did they, you already announced that you received the grant for the, what is it called, it's a funny word, for the support.
For the pay as you throw?
No, for the, the supporting person.
Yes, for the pay as you throw for the MAC coordinator to explore that option.
Right, so we already announced that, and then maybe we just run through, we've applied for two or three more grants.
We've applied for three more grants. We've applied for the recycling partnership grant for the recycling totes that would be given away to residents for free. And then we also applied for an organic food compost pilot program. And then we also applied for, and so for the compost program, it would be with a company such as Black Earth or some of the other ones, or bootstraps, I forget the company title, but where they take your organic food waste and you put them in those barrels, and they come and they collect them. And it would be a pilot program to see whether or not people would be interested in joining because there is a fee for the actual disposal. So the user would be paying the fee directly, we would just be utilizing the grant to help start that effort by providing the barrel and the startup kit that would allow you to take on that initiative. And then we also applied for the recycled dividends grant, which is something that we do annually. We don't get much money for that, it's about a little under $2,000, or just about $2,000 every year. We are able to get additional points if we're able to meet some of the criteria that they've added to their list. So if we have our composting, if we, you know, offer pay as you throw, if we have the library of things that has like the trash grabbers, if we have a hazardous waste, hazardous house?
Hazardous, yeah, hazardous waste, I know, hazardous waste pickup or drop off, yeah.
If we host one of those events, so we keep on getting points, and every time we get a point, we get more money. So some communities are getting up to 20,000, even more, annual funds that they can put back into their community for recycling efforts and to reduce trash and things going into the landfills. So we are on a smaller path, but we are making strides. So we applied for our annual award for the recycled dividends program.
Right. So, and as part of, the committee is also, various members are looking into other things that we can help people dispose of, mattresses, hazardous waste. All kinds of ideas come up in the committee meetings, and we welcome anybody who's even not on the committee, who might have an idea to pop in and, and talk to us if you wish to. There's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of education that we're going to start pushing out as far as so people understand that as we move forward, as we provide, hopefully providing the recyclable cart free of charge, everybody will be really great and will really ignite the town again to get involved in trash management, really, is what we need. It's just trying, they, some call it smart, save money and reduce trash. We would like to be, start redirecting as much as possible out of the trash stream. And in going to a pay as you throw, it allows the homeowners to take into their own hands and their own wallet, how much do you want to spend for throwing out your trash? And what else would you like to do instead of just buying a trash bag? We would not charge our residents twice for the same bag of trash. It would not be a tax on a tax. It'd be a payment that would go into a revolving fund dedicated to our trash contract to help keep that cost lower so that it doesn't take money away from other departments in town, as is now happening. Whether departments realize it or not, when they're told they have to level fund their expenses, and the highway department has to level fund their roadwork. Because we have other costs, other than just the school. School's big, but we have other costs such as this trash contract that is growing far faster than 2.5%. And any cost that we can clearly see that's going to exceed the cap of 2.5%, there's only two ways to deal with it. One would be to leave it all inside the town's operating budget and drain resources from other departments in order to continue to pay whatever cost to dispose of trash. And the second way, which many towns have adopted, I don't have the statistic in front of me right now, but it's high, it's, it's close to 50% maybe have gone to pay as you throw. Where you buy the bags, you decide how much you want to throw out, you pay for it, just like you pay for your water bill and your electric bill. You don't pay your neighbor's water bill, you don't pay your neighbor's electric bill. We'd start to educate people about why this is a good idea, how it benefits them and the town. And, and my goal personally would be to never see another override for trash in this town ever again, that trash would be able to take care of itself. And I do think the committee members are working really hard on education. I know they're working with our cable coordinator, right, on doing some, some shout-outs and some informational things. All kinds of good ideas are coming up. One I heard recently was if you have a small container to put in an upstairs bathroom, there are recyclables in the bathroom that we often throw in the trash because we're not near our recycling barrel, which is typically down in the kitchen or garage area. So think about these small things, if you have other great ideas, I'm open to hearing them. Next is the Penticat Regional Agreement, and I brought it up at our last agenda because I wanted to, to check on the issue of the preschool count being considered in our percentage enrollment count, and I believe it is, being used in our current percentage. It's not in the regional agreement that way. At least the agreement that I got from Rebecca says K through 12. So the preschool, I mean, I haven't had a child in preschool in a long time, but I did ask the questions to find out about it. It is what I thought, that there is the, the special education preschooler coming under an early intervention grant. It's grant funded, and then other families, as much as room is available at Bagnall, can pay to send their child to preschool at Bagnall. So if you have all your children at Bagnall, and they have openings, and you want your preschool to go there, you do pay to send your child there. So I don't feel that we need to wait for the regional agreement committee to meet, to sit down and, and write a letter to ask that this be addressed. Because the regional agreement, my reading of it, says K through 12, not pre-K through 12. Pre-K, I think, would require a town meeting vote, at least what I read of it. If anybody else has read through the agreement and disagrees, I'm open to hearing about it because I may be right, but I could be wrong.
It's worth asking the question, right?
Yes.
How about in the regional agreement, holding the schools to the same 2.5% that the, that the towns have to abide by? And I, I don't see anything wrong with that. They, they take up more than 50% of the budget, and I think they should be held to the same 2.5% as the town. If they go over that, it hurts, it hurts us on the other end.
I agree, it's a difficult balancing act, but, you know, over the years, watching as things have happened, I mean, as you're aware, we've voted contracts that have given more than 2.5% raises because we felt that the raise was needed, the position deserved it, all different reasons for that, to retain personnel that we don't want to lose. And sometimes we have departments that need to go more than 2.5%. When we absorbed the firefighters that were paid on the grant, we had to eventually work them into our town budget. And of course, so there's a give and take all the time. I, I understand where you're coming from, but I feel that, to put that in a regional agreement, wouldn't be supported probably. I think that our town administrator did a very good job this year, meeting with the school, delivering our messages to the school, and also adding her expertise on the town budget side about what would happen on the town side if the school wasn't able to bring that budget into balance with our town budgets. It's a tough call, I mean, when you see the Essex retirement go up, what, over 5%? Trash goes up over 5%. It's, it's hard, it's really difficult. 2.5% does not go very far. So I, I don't think I would put a cap on every single budget at 2.5% because sometimes a budget needs to go up more than 2.5%, we have to figure out a way to do it and still keep the budget in balance. And this year, we were able to do that. I think it was a good budget. But I do think the enrollment numbers are important because they also control the allocation of the school override, which is completely on student enrollment, completely on that. So even if the preschool numbers being in there right now don't impact us too much, because I, I think they kind of even out across the district, there could be a day when there is a problem. So I feel like if it's not in the regional agreement and they're using them in the assessment, now is the time to say something with this new business manager and to say, what, what needs to happen? Do we need a vote, do we need a change? I don't know. Does that sound reasonable? That's why it's under old business, it's not. It's not hurting us right now, I don't think, from what I saw of it, but I'm worried about it being in there. Comments?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable to bring up that question now. As far as the, the 2.5%, unfortunately, the school has the same problems that the town faces and that the, all the residents face. All the different inflations in all the different areas. And when it comes to the schools, for me, I want to do what's best for the education of the students and promote them because they are our future, they always have been our future. And I think it's one of the reasons that we still have an elected school board, to keep them out of our finances so that they can focus solely on what's good for the students and what's going to be best for them. And, and I take that same approach moving forward.
Mark, comments? I can't just have a voice anymore.
I can't talk anyways.
I'm sorry. Well, you said you thought it was reasonable to at least ask the question?
Yes.
Okay. And Ed, reasonable to ask the question about the preschool, do you think?
Uh, almost, almost.
Would you support having our town administrator bring up the concern about if preschool is concluded in the student count?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Do you need a vote on that, or are you okay?
As long as you all agree, I can start to draft something up for the next meeting.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Next is the housing production plan review. That was the presentation we had last week. I think it was like five chapters, was it, or more? It was like 80 something pages.
So there was, yes, the housing production plan was the plan that was presented to you by the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission at the last meeting. They presented more so in the realm of the data for our particular community in relation to the region and the state. There was some commentary about the strategy, specifically focusing on the fact that we will reach our 10% as required under the subsidized housing inventory when the apartment buildings are built over at Sewell Street, off of Salem Street. So I believe there was some comments as to whether or not you would like to make any adjustments to the strategies that were presented and discussed by the stakeholder group to reflect some more of what you would envision for potential housing strategies moving forward.
Thank you. So what I'm wondering is, when we, I'm just going to the, yeah, our last select meeting? May 28th, yes? That was when we had the report on, May 28th?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to see the, oh, here, it all is. Merrimack Valley Planning, yep. I thought they had a... Yeah, it's, so it has chapter one, introduction, background, blog, community overview and findings. Chapter two is demographic profile. I don't think we have a lot to say about that, really. Chapter three is local housing conditions. Chapter four is housing development constraints, environmental, infrastructure, and regulatory. And chapter five is housing production strategy. So... It's really between chapters three and five, I feel like we would probably have the most to say, if anything. Does that sound right?
Yes, I would say that the strategy section would be the, the most of, or the chapter that you would have the most say in, correct.
Okay. But when, we haven't had a, we're not bound to have a public hearing on this, but we can have a, open it up to the public if we wish, or?
Not a public hearing, but, I mean, we had a presentation, we've solicited feedback, we have had public meetings in which type, in which case we had tried to advertise. We tried to capture audiences both in person and virtually. We tried to capture some of the survey results that we had received when we did the comprehensive master plan so that we were not to overburden the residents in terms of querying them for more information. So we did do a, a public engagement, a few public engagement sessions in regards to this particular topic. But no, a public hearing, a formal public hearing is not required for the adoption of this plan. And remember, it's the planning board that would need to adopt this plan and an endorsement by the board, the select board.
So it's going to the planning board first, and then it comes back to us?
Exactly. But at the last meeting, you had mentioned specifically that you would like to take a deeper dive into the strategies that you felt as though that they did not meet the demands of the community with the recent housing development. So we had added it for a older unfinished business to continue that conversation as needed.
Okay, so it's mainly in that last chapter then, it's turning on page 28.
And that would be that chart that you see about whose role it is to carry that out, et cetera.
Right, okay, so... They will make changes to this based on input from the planning board? Is that what you're saying? They won't do it from, changes from us? We have to wait for the planning board to weigh in on this?
You don't have to wait for them, but you, you could wait for them as well. I just assumed that based upon the comments that were received at the last meeting that there might need to be additional discussion between the board as to what they would like to present for strategies, which in then turn, then case, would be presented to the planning board to be considered under their purview as well, so that when we go back to a formal adoption of the plan, it would be a, a, a plan that's been reviewed by both boards, and if there was any recommendations or comments or edits that the select board were recommending, that the planning board also got to understand what those were. But if there's no comments, we can also just wait to see what the planning board does, and then at that particular point in time endorse the support, or endorse the plan from the select, from the board, the select board.
Okay, well, I'm open to input from the board. I'm not a person that likes to wait and see. And that's why, I guess, I asked to have this on there, is I feel like the, um, chapter five, the housing production strategies, they listed a bunch of different ideas. And since we are going to meet our quota of 10%, once those apartment goes in, go, go into place, I, I thought if you want to, we could spend time on that chapter five and go through those strategies to see if we agree or not agree. So I'm just talking about, chapter five starts on page 28 of the packet that we last got. It has, um, strategy one is expand the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to allow for detached structures. Strategy two, investigate models that address creation of starter homes that are right-sized. Strategy three, conduct ongoing community education on housing development options and challenges. Strategy four, activate and utilize private and municipally owned property to develop housing that supports community needs. Strategy six, achieve compliance with the MBTA Communities Law through locally informed plan that addresses Groveland's housing needs. Strategy seven, collaborate with the Groveland Housing Authority to increase the supply of affordable housing and maximize staffing capacity. Those are the strategies in that chapter. Do we want to, I'm not envisioning that we're going to address them right now on this moment in time, but do we want to try to take a look at these on the next agenda? I won't be here on the next one, maybe the one after that, in July? Or do you want to wait for the planning board to weigh in?
I want to see them next meeting.
Planning board? I don't know.
I believe that they will be meeting the, the third.
Third of July?
The third week in June, which would be next week?
Yep. Next week.
No, excuse me, they'll be meeting in the eight, on the 18th or the 25th. I forget if they're the second or the third Tuesday of the month.
So would, would their meeting be before the two meetings?
Well, is this on their agenda?
Tomorrow?
That's another good question.
I don't think it's any harm in us going through some of it again. If we have more questions for Merrimack Valley, we can certainly summarize our questions. But if there's a strategy that we either think we don't want to do or look at at this time, we could say we don't think we need to do this at this time. You know what I mean? And they just, they're trying to provide us with all of the options for strategies that would fit within our town. Doesn't mean, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we should just rubber stamp every strategy possible. If we're gonna, if we're gonna say yes to the report, we're supposed to have some, some ambition as to trying to, to see that these are followed. We're not supposed to just rubber stamp it and say, did that step? Especially that MBTA, that's that over-density zone, right?
That's the what zone?
Where they, we have to, they have to do an overlay of, of housing or something, yeah?
Yes, there is a requirement under the 3TA MBTA zoning that we would need to comply with, that we're currently looking at.
Okay. And planning is looking at that?
Yes, and we have a grant that we received, and the consultant is actually going to be attending our next meeting to kick off that session.
Okay, so that strategy would be, be taken care of then through that? Okay, so that, that takes one off the table out of seven. What is the feeling of the board? Push it, push it for?
Still out of our production plan. I mean, they, they're just working on... I mean, they're just working on the plan and what's going to fit best in Groveland. And we have to prove, we still have to go to town meeting with it to get the people to approve it. So it's not something that's going to readily go away. And then there's still a lot of hesitation because of what's happening in Milton and other towns. So I think it's very important to have that on there so we're ready and prepared and we don't lose sight of what needs to be done.
So do you want to keep it under all business that we leave it on?
I think we move it to the meeting next that you'll be here in July.
In July?
Because then the, the planning board should have had ample time to discuss it and...
Great. Okay. So then the other all business was the Hazard Mitigation Plan Review? That was everything that can go wrong? The flood plains, the invasive species? I forget what else. What did they list as our? Do we, do we need to vote on this as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Well, we have some time on it. Is the planning board looking at this or are we just the only board then?
The planning board has a role in it, but the deciding factor is the Select Board.
Okay. So that's something that we would need to bring forward?
Correct.
So we have winter storm events, severe winters, and invasive plants? And invasive insects? Is that the top, that's the top of our list? What is the feeling of the board on this report?
I think we had a very comprehensive group of people that worked on that.
I know.
Everybody that's involved in all the emergencies and then some.
Yes, MEMA, FEMA, everything. Every initial in the alphabet was there.
And including our police chief, fire chief, building inspector, town planner, town administrator.
And they say we have to update this every five years, so we're at the five-year mark. I would imagine that's why it's happening. And that presentation was done by that young woman Hannah. And we are part of ten communities that participate in this regional update. So are we going to push this forward to another agenda to go over? Or what's the pleasure of the board?
I feel comfortable in voting it in place.
Ed, what are your thoughts on it? Voted as is? They put us in the zone, identified the hazards. You feel they've overlooked anything? It says to hold a second public meeting, listening session as part of the plan adoption. Is that us or FEMA? Probably FEMA?
There's no further public hearings that would be required by the town for this. They did come, they did provide their presentation. They did the public outreach. They're looking for public comment right now. At the last meeting, if you remember, she provided a link where one chapter within the entire document, the other chapters are some of our neighboring communities that agreed to participate. So it is going through that public comment section now. But as for additional public hearings, we are, we have met our requirements.
So, have you made a motion?
No, because I don't think we need to make a motion at this time.
You don't think so?
No, because I think they're gonna take it to, they're gonna update it with any public comments they get from now, send it to MEMA and FEMA.
Again, and then it's going to come back to us?
Come back and then, then it'll be back to us to finalize the regional. So unless, unless we have any input to make any changes.
Well, it says each municipality will adopt the plan.
Yeah.
Through us.
So I think, I think, I think we do that after it comes back from MEMA and FEMA.
What do you think? Yes? We wait for it to come back one more time? Yes. Okay. Sound good? Okay, so then we're done with that. Other items not reasonably anticipated? There'd be none? Administrator's time, town administrator?
Thank you. So I just have a couple of items per usual. As we discussed from the grants at the last meeting and as we discussed earlier this evening, the grants that we recently applied for was the Recycling Partnership Grant, the Recycled Dividends Grant, the Organic Food Compost Program, the Mass Works Strap Program for Washington Street, Dam Culver, the Site Readiness Grant for one fifty Center Street, and the Police Department had applied for a COPS grant. And the world of procurement, we had just gone out for our emergency ambulance services. We also went off a bid for our heat pump for the server room over at the Police Department. One of our HVAC units had failed, so we were looking to get that replaced. And I'm currently working on an IFB for the oil tank removal at the Bagnell Elementary School. As you remember, that was part of our capital plan this current year. In order to get that removed, we do need to go out to bid. The price of the contract is over twenty-five thousand dollars. And due to the nature of the work, we do need to make sure that we have qualified individuals who will be removing the tank. I also just wanted to update the board and let them know that I will be meeting with Senator Char and Representative Ramos, as well as the Economic Development Chair, Bill Dunn. We will be discussing the Valley Screw property. We'll also be meeting with Mass DEP on this particular issue. As you recall, at the last meeting, I had updated you that we also had a meeting with Congressman Seth Melton, as well as the EPA and Mass DEP in regards to that particular property and moving forward. And then I just wanted to let the board know that at your next meeting, there will be a legislative update. We extended an invitation and both the senator and representative have accepted to come before the board and give a brief legislative update on what they're expecting for the budget and what they had put forward for the state budget and their priorities moving forward. And as just mentioned, we will also be having a MBTA one boot camp. So it will be kind of like your initial exposure to MBTA zoning, what's being requested, what's required by law, and what we'll be doing with the consultant moving forward. So we'll get a better understanding of the requirements that are before us and how we intend to meet them. So we have retained Emily Inez with Inez Associates, and she had been working with us on the Comprehensive Master Plan, as well as the feasibility study at one fifty Center Street. So we're excited that she's agreed to work with us again. And you will be seeing her at your next meeting on the twenty-fourth. And then the very last item, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates because it's more public as things start to move forward. So for community preservation projects that we're working on, you'll see a lot of activities starting to happen over the next few months with some of the projects that were approved in two thousand twenty-three, most notably the skate park, the pickleball and tennis courts, and the Washington Street basketball courts behind South Station over by Washington Hall. So we have been working with Spawn Ranch on the skate park. They have helped us with the conceptual design. We had multiple public engagement sessions and surveys that we sent out to get a better understanding of what people would be looking for from the skate park perspective, what types of ramps and slopes and all that fun stuff. So we did get a lot of feedback. We actually got more feedback on that particular project than we had in some of our larger Comprehensive Master Plans. So we were very excited about that, but that started off the project. So we initially got some feedback. We had initial design conceptuals that we were working with Spawn Ranch. That slowly progressed and it turned into more engineering and construction documents. So we've been working on getting the construction documents in play with Spawn Ranch so that kind of, you know, your original conceptual is similar to what we saw with the dog park. You throw everything that you could possibly want, all of the features, everything everybody would expect to have. You go through the construction and design phase, and it starts to get minimized based upon what you have set down for the budget. It doesn't mean that those things won't happen. It just starts to get minimized as you go through the process because what you want from a conceptual standpoint doesn't take into consideration the cost. So we're at that phase now. So Spawn Ranch has been working with us. We recently did survey and geotech work over there. So you might have seen people down at the field. That's what they were doing. So hopefully, we will be finalizing that over the summer and we will begin construction in late summer, early fall. This should not impact some of the more larger events that we have down at the parks, notably Groveland Day and the Pine Speedway reunion. But we are taking that into consideration and working with the event organizers to make sure that there is no impact and that we, if need to, will border off that particular area to make sure that there, there is no, that nobody entering the site or anything of that nature. Then with the pickleball tennis courts, we are working with a couple of vendors for the surfacing. So we're just trying to get the surfacing finalized. The Highway Department had done its initial work in getting the grading done because, as you know, when we originally did the Pines work, we had not finalized the paving in that particular area and the grading in that area, as well as not even putting final top coat on the parking lot in itself. You'll see that the speed bumps are a lot higher than they should be because of that reason. So they had done the initial work. So now we're working with private contractors to figure out exactly what the surfacing will look like in the courts and how they'll be set up, whether or not we have two pickleball courts, if we have one, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we are working with them now to finalize that. The same with the Washington courts. We're working with a surface company that will help us come in and figure out exactly how the court will be situated. We had originally discussed and most likely will move forward with the same concept as what we have over at the Pines where you have your full court and then you have a half court so that if you come down, you have the ability to shoot around at one hoop if somebody's playing a full game on the other. Or we'll just do the half courts as it currently is situated to give people more playing opportunities or just the one court. So we're just trying to figure out exactly how that would be situated and how we can section that off from the parking that's over at the South Fire Station as well as Washington Hall. And then for our two thousand twenty-four projects that have been approved, we are currently working with all those who were awarded a grant through the community preservation to do our grant agreements, which lays out all of the specifics for the projects, how they will provide progress reports, procurement, how things need to be situated and how updates, updates need to be provided. You just don't get a lump sum of money and get to go out and spend it. You'd still have to abide by municipal finance laws and we still need to make sure that it's filtering through the community. So those have gone out. We have looked forward with design work for the Shanahan Parking Lot and we have looked forward with design work for the Pines Parking. So we have retained TEC, who is looking at the design phase of the project. They'll come back, they'll show us exactly what they think in terms of the layout, how it will meet all of the requirements in terms of the regulations for proper vehicle travel, you know, parking with, whether or not the grades meet in this particular area for the Pines and the connection there and which area would be more suitable. And then we'll start to go into the design estimate phase where, again, you know, what are we looking for? What's the concept? How do we make it happen? How do we make it happen within our budget? So those are moving forward. And I've also received communication from one of the applicants so far because it's still early, it's not even fiscal year twenty-five yet, that is eager to start working on Perry Park. So that individual has provided me some information to look at some consultants that she's looked at in terms of providing assistance with our invasive species that we have over at the Pines Parking with the Japanese knotweed and some of that and trying to take that into consideration before we start getting into the design. So those are the ones that have started thus far, so we're looking forward to it. And I hope to give you an update as things progress. But in terms of timing, again, the skate park, we're looking at late summer, early fall. And then for the pickleball tennis courts over at the Pines, we're not solid on a timeframe, but we are trying to lock that down. So again, we can be mindful of Groveland Day and the Pine Speedway reunion because they do utilize that area. So we either want to make sure that we're blocking it off so people aren't ruining the surface or that the fencing is up and it won't impede upon the operation and that others have an idea of where they could set up their tents or some of the other things that they set up for those particular events. So those are just the updates I wanted to keep the board apprised of.
Not too much going on?
Never.
Anybody have any questions on all of that? It's a lot. Okay, and we'll move to Select, Select Board Member time. Ed, do you have anything that you want to add in? Okay, Mark?
No, I'm good.
Not today.
Yep. I was just gonna say, congratulations to all of our graduates. I've seen the balloons and the pictures up and I know that high schools are graduating, colleges have graduated, middle schools will be graduating, and the elementary school sixth grade thing is coming up soon too. So really exciting time of year and a very, very fun time for families. So acknowledge the celebration and we're proud of our young people who are graduating. Congratulations. For correspondence, we have an email from Chief Gillen concerning the town meeting and it mentions that he's already met with the newly elected moderator and met with the previous moderator and they have figured out a plan going forward that will work for the next town meeting. So that's in your correspondence. Also in the correspondence is from Mass DOT update on fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Fair Share Education and Transportation Funds.
Question on that to Rebecca? On the Education and Transportation Funds?
Yep.
Rebecca? This would be, according to this, would be given out in two phases. What, the first one, the initial fifty million, using the Chapter ninety formula, the road mileage, population, employment. What do we anticipate getting in that? This is over and above the normal Chapter ninety?
Let me just look that up so that I don't speak out of turn. So for FY twenty-four, the certification was for one hundred and thirty-one thousand seventy dollars. So that was for FY twenty-four. So they have not released the FY twenty-five. But I would imagine based upon the roadway mileage, population, et cetera, et cetera, we're right in the same ballpark. The, the formula wouldn't have changed that dramatically.
When they talk about mileage, population, employment, is that, employment, is that, people that are employed in the town of Groveland at different establishments?
I would believe so. Kind of how we get our calculation for the equalized valuation and our wealth factor. But I would need to research that and get you an exact answer. But I would agree with your assessment that it would be based upon the employment numbers for the community.
Good. Thank you.
All set? Okay, and our next regular meeting is, we are Monday, June twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM. And Jason will be chairing. I'll be in Jamaica. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to mention this?
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you. I saw the yellow and I'm thinking, what? Oh, okay, yes, this is coming up on Thursday. That's this week, right? Yes. So Thursday this week at the Groveland Historical Society is having an Antique Appraisal Roadshow from six to nine PM at the Washington Hall, which is right next door to South Fire Station. So you can bring your treasures and you can meet with Dan Meter. He's an Antique Appraiser and Director at the John McInnes Auctioneers. Items will be discussed and given an approximate valuation. There is a five-dollar admission fee and five dollars per item, maximum of three items. And the question is, what's in your attic? I like it. So that's on Thursday this week, six to nine PM. Thank you. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-eight.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous, one absent. Thank you.